Meeting of the Franklin Board of Education. Can we have a roll call, please, Dr. Beer?
Yes. Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Sapersky?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Yeah.
I am here. Mrs. Larson is excused.
Thank you, and the meeting has been properly posted. Can we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. School presentation, House of Corrections. Mrs. Cody, Mrs. Jewell. Please.
Well, good evening. I will just do some very quick introductions. You all know and love the Ms. Steph Jewell, our current Associate Principal at, not at Forest Park Middle School. She is at Franklin High School. And she has also been providing leadership over the Franklin Alternative Youth Program at the Milwaukee House of Corrections. And then, we are really thrilled also to introduce you to our two teachers who service our students there as well, Umar Toshid and Rob Kalpinski. So, we're all really looking forward to learning more about how they are servicing our students at the House of Corrections, so I'll turn it over to them.
Awesome. So, as you all know, in the Franklin Public School District, we have a unique opportunity to serve students who are currently residing in Franklin as residents of the Milwaukee House of Corrections. So, the purpose of our presentation this evening is to share a little bit more with you about the program itself, with the hopes that you'll understand more of what we do, as well as give you a glimpse of the students that we serve currently through our program. In addition, we hope that you see how important our program is and the opportunities and privilege that we have to serve these students. We really believe that our program should be considered a prideful part of Franklin Public Schools as we serve students who are engaged in learning and motivated to continue their education. So with that, I'm going to let my teammates here kind of give you a little bit more background about them, who they are, and why they do what they do. And then, we'll give you a little tour of our space, some background on our program, and again, some more information about the students that we serve.
My name is Umar, and I've been at the House of Corrections for six years. Overall, I've been a teacher for eight years. And the reason why I like working there is because, like Ms. Jewell said, it's a very unique program. And we teach students who have unique challenges, but also, they provide like unique opportunities. We get to see success right away. Someone comes in with like 23 credits, and we were able to see them graduate from high school in, you know, several months. So, it feels good to see that success and reward, and see our students succeed who might not otherwise. So, that's, isn't why we're there, and we would like to show you like what we do, and...
My name is Rob. I've been in education for 21 years. I've been in Franklin School District since November 30th. Because of this opportunity. Everything that, everything that we have at the HOC is my why. Everything gets incorporated there. It is, it's my mission. Second chances, engagement, helping, helping our young men and women build capacity, builds their self-esteem. They're gonna be back in society, and what better way to help them contribute to become, you know, members of society, and, and to be able to take care of themselves and their family. And it's rewarding. Every day, I, I go to work, I pinch myself. Man, I'm not just saying that, like, this is awesome. I mean, I can think of, there's so many positives. So many stories in just a short amount of time with the success. It's just, it's amazing. And I have to say that the, my, our team is small, but it is, it's excellent. It is an excellent team. We work so well together. I'm just really excited to be here and kind of help show what our program is about.
In addition, Lori Bunning couldn't join us this evening. She is one of our educational assistants in the program and our only educational assistant right now. She's been with the program, I think we decided like maybe seven years, but she's been with Franklin Public Schools for much longer than that. And I'm Steph Jewell. This is my ninth year in education, fourth at Franklin Public Schools, and my first overseeing the Franklin Alternative Youth Program. And a little bit of my why, like, we really want to provide all students with an opportunity to develop their skills as learners and as citizens. And these are students who really need that to achieve their own version of personal success. I agree and echo the thoughts of both Umar and Rob in terms of this team being on the same, the same page about the purpose of our work and our why, and really providing students that opportunity. So with that...
So, with that, we're gonna do a tour. We can't have people come there, for obvious reasons. So, I did a little video shoot and some editing, so I'm just gonna have you wa, wa, I'm gonna have you walk through it, and I'll kind of point out some things as we go through the tour. There's a little bit of background music.
I know, I'm just making sure you're ready.
I'm ready. You're welcome, thank you.
Sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
That's short and sweet.
That's all we can show you. Many people don't even know we have a program in this building. These are just some pictures from programs that took place in there. Now, here's, when you walk into our space, you open the doors, you're walking in, and I can kind of do a pan around you, you'll kind of see what we're doing here. It's a nice wide-open space. Lots of space for students to work. It's kind of meet in the middle. It's kind of like a nice little community center type of thing. We have different types of things. We have standing desks, writing, pedal cycle bikes, or desks, I should say. You can see our library in the back. Those are individual offices. Some for the teachers and educational assistants. One is gonna be our future home of GED testing, as you'll see in a moment. That's gonna be our future GED testing space, thanks to the tenacity of Ms. Jewell to help try to get that coming along. Each member, each student gets to come up with their own lead, with their own philosophy and idea as a member of our community. I did not do that. That's clearly some real hard skills. That should be it. The one point, the one thing I'd bring up is, I can't tell you how many times our students are like, love coming to our space. It's so chill, and it's so easy to kind of like just learn and be aware of things compared to the chaos of, you know, where they have to live. So, it's, it's just a wonderful space. It really is.
Thank you, Rob. So, with that, I want to give you a little bit more background about our program. So, we do have our own mission and vision statements that we really try to keep at the forefront of our work to remind us of why we are doing what we're doing. So, the mission of the Franklin Alternative Youth Program is to provide a safe, nurturing, tailored environment where students engage in learning to develop the skills and habits needed to be successful in school and life. And our vision is that we instill a love of learning in students so they're able to reach work, see their potential, navigate their own path, achieve their goals and dreams, and positively contribute to our community. So then, a little bit of context about the students that we serve. We currently serve students who are 18 to 21 years of age. That's unique. In the past, like year, maybe a little bit more than a year, we used to serve students who were 17 as well, but now, students who are 17 are no longer residents of the Milwaukee House of Correction. So, right now, we're working with 18 to 21-year-olds. We have male and female students. Students enter our program with a variable number of credits and variable educational backgrounds. Some of these are students who have come from a single school and have been in school for the equivalent of a high school career. Other students have been all over the place. Some students haven't attended school regularly at all. Students are residents of the Milwaukee House of Correction for a variable amount of time. Some students are there for weeks to just a month. Some are there for a longer period of time, but it is considered a transitional facility. Currently, there are 20 students enrolled.
Twenty-five now.
Oh, 25 now? Updated numbers all the time. See what I mean? It's quite variable. So, 25 students enrolled. Fifty-three students, maybe more now, have been enrolled since September. And so far, we have one graduate from our program. And 28 students currently with IEDs. So, this is something that we worked on just this year. We wanted to create a promise statement that we could, you know, provide for our students so that they know why we are there and what, what we are there to do for them, and have them kind of hold us accountable for that work. So, this is something that we put together. So, we have come up with four major promises. The first is to pay attention to who our students are, respect the gifts they bring with them to the classroom. The second is to challenge, support, and learn alongside them to help them grow. The third is to help them plan for the future that they want. And the fourth is to help them become active members in their community.
So, the slide you're looking at, this is sort of like historical numbers. There's like two schools, like one pre-COVID and like post-COVID. So, if you look at like 2017, 18, we had 200 students enrolled at the HOC. And 106 with, students with needs or disabilities. 2018 and 19, 175. And 2019 and 20 is like in March when COVID hit. So, we weren't able to enroll anyone like after March because we were kind of like, had to leave HOC. So, 2021, like last year, we had like 93 students and 47 with disabilities. And last year, we did have 17-year-olds there. So, if a student is like 17-year-old, then we have to enroll them by law. So, this year, they have removed 17-year-olds. So, they might or might not come back. So, this is just like sort of historical context, you know? So, if COVID situation improves, you know, in fall, so we might be back to fully running again, but this is sort of like where we are right now.
And I would just add, like, some of the challenges with that to kind of explain like why COVID has continued to have the impact that it has. Students are not allowed to move freely about the building. We can't bring large numbers of students into our space. There are dorms that are quarantined. We can't mix dorms. So, there are very few occasions where we can have more than a student in our space, and it has to be students who are in the same dorm together already. And then, as we mentioned before, without 17-year-olds who are required by law to attend school, all the students have to choose school as something that they want to do.
Just a question. So, were 17-year-olds in the numbers prior to COVID? And when did the 17-year-olds come and go?
So, this year is the only year when they're not there. So, all the years prior, they were there. They were there. So, they removed all of them, like during this school year. Okay, thank you. 21, 22. So, this is sort of like what the program is about. So, we enroll students, and they either work toward earning Franklin diploma or GED, HSCD. So, for example, if someone has 20, 21 credits, then they try to improve on the credits they need. But someone who has like zero credits or four or five credits, then their best chance is working towards their GED, HSCD, and depending on their reading and math skills. So, we help students earn a high school diploma or GED, HSCD, depending on their credits and reading and math levels.
So, when, when students come to our classroom, we, we have two areas that we focus on. It kind of bridges as, as a nice little like transition because they could be coming from some very chaotic situations that we call the dorms. And they come into our space. We want it to be a nice transition of welcoming. So, the two things we look at as social-emotional learning, which is something we, we incorporate like directly, or it can be indirectly through the lessons we do. And some of the things that, you know, that we do, we focus on the same curriculum that you would see at the high school elementary levels. I know I've used stuff that my daughter is actually using in fifth grade at Countrydale. It's, it's relevant. I need to use it. So, so we're using things that help kids and, and anyone just to better kind of like be stronger for themselves and how to better understand themselves, understand their emotions. You know, Mondays, we have meditation Mondays where they come in and, you know, you, just showing you how safe they feel in our, in our environment? Like, there's no way that many of our students would close their eyes and do a meditation where they are. But they feel so comfortable and safe where they are. They're, they're doing it. And it's pretty awesome to see that. And if you want to just go on to the next slide real quick, this kind of shows you some of like different presentations that we've used. We use quotes, thinking calmly, rainstorms. Those are just some, some screenshots of some of the things we've done. The other thing that we do too is we, you can go on to the next slide, please. We look at, it gets, it gets stuck.
I know.
Sorry. Us being a little too fancy. We look at contemporary learning issues, and basically, to help students to focus on democratic, their roles in democratic society by helping improve the decision-making skills, which a lot of times goes hand-in-hand with social, emotional. And we cover a variety of different topics that just are very engaging. Our students really get into the topics we bring up, and it helps them create skills in decision-making and communication because there are a lot of times the topics, you know, I may not even know Mr. T brings up. And so, it brings up really good conversation and how to kind of go about that. Some examples would be in the next slide, would include the ones that you see right here. Just a variety of, a variety of them. And then, sometimes they bring up ideas too. You know, one, one of our young men wants to learn about, you know, Walnut Street. Walnut Street back in the day in City Milwaukee was the richest African-American neighborhood in the United States. So, we're gonna be touching upon that just because it's a really cool part of history. So, we, we like to get feedback from our students to see what, some things they might want to explore.
And because they're, they're watching news in their dorms, so they're like very curious and like interested. So, like whatever happened like right now in Europe or wherever, they see in the news and, you know, students will come in and like ask us questions, like what's happening? So, it's like, they might be there, but like they're aware of like what's happening like around the world, like even like internationally or like nationally or locally. So... And the...
Yes, they have it.
So, this is sort of like a typical like interaction and like lesson creation for our students. So, if you look at like this chart, it's like a flow chart. It sort of explains like how we sort of like do things there. So, for example, a student like shows up on a census, and we call them to school for enrollment, like we interview them, and we find out all the schools where they have been. And sometime, our students are like to three, four, or five different schools. And we get their records. And then, we give assessment in reading and math. And then, based on that, we kind of like decide if they are going toward GED, HSCD, or a high school diploma. And then, they either graduate or they leave if they're like short time. But those credits are on their transcript, and then they sort of like move on. And like the staff side is kind of the same thing where we talk more, okay, what are their needs? What is a student's need? Where they're at? Assign them classes and like determine their path toward GED, HSCD, or a high school diploma. And this is like a typical example of like a student work. They finish world history, you know, and we mark it down, and then we write down like what credit they're in, like average, and then we put it on their transcript. This is sort of like example of like a student. And the last thing is sort of example of, this particular student actually has a lot of credits, and he's close to graduating, but it's not, they're not all filled up like this. So, this is like an example of one student. It's like front and backside. So, he might have like English 9, English 10, English 11, and he needs English 12. So, we help him get English 12. In the middle, you can see he already has algebra and geometry, so he needs like math elective. So, that's like what he's working on right now. And social studies and science, and then there's elective. MPS requires 22 credits to graduate, and Franklin requires 28. So, because majority of our students come from MPS, so we may like an exception where, actually, the district may be an exception where they require 25 credits to graduate.
And that's very similar to like what we would do at the high school. If a student transferred in from Milwaukee Public Schools, we would adjust the credit requirement based on what they were able to earn in their former district versus our district.
So, this, this is an example called Imagine the Possibility. This is one of my students that started back in April of 2021. Came in with 8.5 credits, tested second-grade level in math and fifth grade in reading. And over this time, even though it's been COVID, and he's done so much of his work in the, in the dorm, and he's, he's so focused, so dedicated because he's, you know, I think part of it's because he sees how much we, all of us, believe in him. I just, we just tested him last week, and he is, he's earned 12 credits. He's at the eighth-grade level in math, 11th grade reading, 11th grade level in reading. I promise I didn't fudge any results. I swear under oath. I mean, this, I mean, how exciting. I mean, he is so happy. He's so proud of himself. He got to call his mom and mother's day and deliver this to us. I mean, I mean, this is, I mean, this is what I'm talking about. This is, this is just awesome stuff. And this is what we get to do every day.
So, I'm not gonna read these to you. I'll give you the chance to read them, but since our students not, students could not come to you, we brought them to you in another way. So, we asked them to kind of reflect on what our program means to them. So, I'll give you a little bit of time to read each of these. And this is one that Lori Bunning wanted to share with you as well, so she couldn't be here. She wanted to let you guys know how her experience with the program has been. We'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have for us.
Anybody have any questions?
So, can they do GED now? Or you need to have space, or do that?
So, right now, we are not fully up and running. So, they can still hypothetically take the GED. Right now, we don't have any students who are ready to do that. But right now, the HOC is providing that. And they have said that they are okay with us taking over that process. So, I've worked with Anita Sunstrom, Dr. Mo, to try to figure out how we can facilitate that on our own. Just because working with the HOC staff has its own set of barriers. They only have one individual who's able to test students, who works third shift. So, like anytime we have a student who is ready to test, it takes coordination. That's not always as swift as we would hope because the goal of us having it under our controls, we can do it within the timeframe that the students are still with us. Rather than having them ready to test, trying to coordinate and having them leave the HOC without that opportunity.
Anybody else? I'm really impressed with the work and appreciate it. Sounds like you guys are so excited to get there. And I'm sure that really, really helps the students. What, what will, without 17-year-olds, will, do most people sign up that aren't forced to sign up? I would, I would expect they would, but I wonder what that's like.
We, we do get like a lot of requests. So, they have like a system where any resident there can fill out like a form. And it's the program person's responsibility to like deliver it to us. Sometimes, they're not actually very good at doing that. But because residents are not coming to school, we, some of them were like, we are delivering schoolwork to them. So, when we go to the dorm, they can like request school as well. So, we actually use like a lot of requests, more than we could like even, you know, handle. So, yeah.
We also used to be able to have like 30 students in the space, and now, we can't.
And there still is that age limit, right? I mean...
21. Yeah.
I mean, there's more, there are older residents there.
Yeah, we get, we do get a lot of requests from young men and ladies that clearly want to come to our program, but they're, they're over 21. So, we have to refer them to MATC because there's, there's many individuals that have asked me, gee, how can I get my CDL? How can, I'm 36, how can I get my GEDs? So, it's like, there's a lot of interest for it, you know? So, you know, I wish we could take them all in. I'm not gonna lie, bud.
And I would just like to clarify that these students are our students. They're residents of Franklin, and they are our students. So, because it's a county facility, doesn't mean the county's responsible. They are Franklin residents, and they are our students. And I greatly appreciate the work that you do there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think especially when you mentioned they're looking for a second chance, you know? I really like aspect of giving hope. Because I think as a community, it's most important is that we don't lose hope in anyone. Thank you for what you do. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to community comment. Participants under this agenda item must be residents of the Franklin Public School District or parents/guardians of Franklin Public School District students. Must state for the record their full name and address, Must state for the record their full name and address and must limit their statements to three minutes with a maximum of 15 minutes for any and all comment. So there are, there are nine, nine people that want to speak. So that would be under a half an hour. Can we extend it, especially since many of us?
Yes.
Many of the students are, or many of the speakers are students.
Absolutely.
Great. So strike maximum 15 minutes. But please, three minutes, there will be a timer when it's your turn. If the community comment is related to an agenda item, the board may respond to that comment either at the end of the community comment session or during the discussion of that agenda item. The board may not discuss a comment or question that does not relate to an agenda item per Board Policy Administrative Rules 8300. And Mary Carol Lewich, you are first, please. Well, we want somebody to show them how it's done.
Okay. Listen. Mary Carol Lewich, 8208 West Coventry Drive. I'm here to, as a employee at Pleasantview and also as a representative of our secretary's Office and Educational Assistant Union. You're going to be discussing nursing, health policies and nursing delegation policy today. And I, I know that over the years, many of the educational assistants and others have helped to take care of children in schools. And they've done variety of jobs. I spoke with one who has recently retired and she came from a health service background when she started at Franklin, and I'm starting to fog up here. When she started at Franklin. So her taking on her position, she felt she was very well prepared for because she was working with students with physical disabilities and needed sometimes to help them do various things throughout the day. But many of the aides are not. And this last, this, these sentences at the bottom of page one says that no employee except a healthcare professional may be required to accept training or delegation of procedures and or administration of medications by any means other than oral medication administration. Recently, our third graders were taking a field trip to the Franklin one-room schoolhouse. And one of our students requires medication if she has an episode. And the EA that was given her responsibility for her, she is a young college student and she was very concerned because the method of giving this student her medication if needed was a little bit more than what she was ready to handle. And the special ed teacher that did go along on this field trip was not, didn't know how to give the medication either. And I know that we have in the past hired LPNs and I guess that's why I'm here. I, I think that we do have children that need special assistance. And I know Molly and Lori can't do everything and they can't be in every building. But if we were, if I would encourage you to consider either hiring LPNs for each building or maybe a certified nursing assistant, someone who actually has been trained to work with health-related matters so that, or even if it's just on call. So that if a student is in need of receiving medication in a particular manner, there would be somebody that would be actually qualified to deliver that medication. And I really don't want to go into specifics, so.
No, yeah, please.
But I, I just, I, I just think that we, we did in the past have some LPNs, I believe, that were on call. And I think that if we, as a district, really do care about the children and their health and also about the support staff, that we, we could make an effort to see if we could figure out a way of managing that a little bit more professionally.
I appreciate it. That's a good comment. And I think we'll talk about it further when, when the policy comes up.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Andy Wachter, please.
Andy Wachter, 3930 West Victory Creek Drive. I'm speaking from the point of view of a choir student in the top all-female student ensemble, Vochia Terna and the Franklin Energized Show Choir and the FHS Color Guard team. I'm under the impression that you will be talking about the music program budget today. And from what I have heard, we are planning on cutting the band teachers from three to, from four to three and the choir teachers from two to one. I believe that if we had only one choir teacher, they would be spread way too thin. We would not get the intense repertoire that we have currently, especially being in one of the top girls' choirs. Sorry. Especially being in one of the top girls' choirs, our repertoire is very intense and it requires a lot to learn it and teach it. And I don't think that if we only had, you know, one teacher, we could get the focus needed from that one teacher, you know, entirely set on learning that intense repertoire and teaching it properly. I think that my education would severely suffer from not having that, that focus and that dedication to one thing from being spread too thin over multiple different classes and multiple different schools. I also wanted to talk about how we have already lost one choir teacher. I'm not sure, none of us really know what happened with that. But Ms. Heinand, you know, did not return at the beginning of the school year after just a couple days. And that impacted us a lot. And Mr. Chilson has been extremely like professional and we are all extremely, extremely grateful for him having stepped in, assuming that he was only going to be there for a maximum of two weeks and then ending up staying the rest of the entire school year. I know I'm not only speaking for myself when I say that. Everyone has formed an attachment to him and we believe that he is a vital part of the music program at Franklin High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Isabella Merkel, please.
Hello, my name is Isabella Merkel and my address is 4446 West Tumble Creek Drive. And I'm gonna be talking on the same topic as Andy was. So from my perspective, I am in the top band at Franklin High School. I was a member of the wellness team, which was a new leadership team created for marching band. And I am continuing marching band in college. So I understand that the possible budget cuts and the reducing of the teachers is due to a lack of enrollment or a drop in enrollment. And that's because we weren't able to play last year. And when we were, we were playing in bags. And I understand it was for COVID safety, but we weren't allowed to play. And that's why so many people sign up for the class is because we get to play. Imagine there is, like for lifeguarding, what if you weren't allowed to go in the pool? Who would still sign up for that class? Enrollment would drop. And I think that's a huge part of why enrollment dropped. And next year for the retention rate from eighth grade to ninth grade, it's around 80%. And usually it's about 40%. And I think that is in large part due to our four wonderful directors going between both schools and really helping with sixth through 12th grade. And I don't feel like it would be in any way beneficial to cut that down. And also at the Saber Invite, the marching band competition we hosted in September, I was a band guide and I talked with both the Cudahy and Germantown band directors. And they faced a similar drop in numbers proportional to their band size. They are smaller bands. But it's not just a Franklin issue that the numbers are dropping. It is a statewide issue because we were not allowed to play. And personally in band, it's the most fun when we're playing, when we're doing research on our repertoire. Yes, it's important, but it's just not as fun, you know? And I seriously don't think that it's a good idea to cut down the number of teachers. And like in our rehearsal spaces, one director is conducting our piece while the other three are in the different sections, whether it be with the clarinets, with the trombones, with percussion, and they're helping in whatever way. Or they'll pull a section and work on a piece individually. And we just had our concert last night and personally I thought it was very successful. All of our pieces sounded amazing and I think that was due to our directors. And I think cutting down from four to three wouldn't help. And I think it would reduce the amount of talent that is there and how it can grow and foster such a positive environment. And this past year we got third at state for marching band. And I seriously think it's in large part due to our directors and all the work that Mrs. Um Hafer, Mr. Dunmeier, Warner and Miracle have done to help us to grow this far and be this successful. So that's my perspective as a band student. And with everything I presented, I just hope you take that into consideration with the budgeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Sophia Bennett, please.
Hello, my name is Sophia Bennett. I live on 8186 Forest Court and I'm a junior here at Franklin. And I'm here because I want to speak about the band and the choir and the music department as a whole. So in short, for the same reason as the last two speakers. Part of me feels like I kind of grew up in the music department. I have been in band and choir and I even did an orchestra program that was offered for a year in fourth grade. And I've watched the music program change a lot over the years that I've been in, over the years that I've been here. And I watched my older brother grow up playing band and I wanted to do that my whole life. I was like, yes, band is a thing. I get to do it, I get to do it on my own. I get to show that I can do something for myself. But like Bella was just spoke, she spoke to like, she, she was a testament to the like talent of band and the, what the teachers contribute to that. But I think there's like, obviously there's just more to band than just that. Like that's a huge part of it, but everyone would agree that it's so much more. You make so many friends in band. I've made friends with so many people that I didn't think I would be friends with. Like I was a sophomore, I was like, ugh, underclassmen. And then I was in band and I was like, oh my gosh, underclassmen. I was making friends with people who I didn't think I would ever want to make friends with. I was, I, I made friends that I'd never thought I would make friends with. I realized that I saw a lot of potential in myself that I wouldn't have seen everywhere, anywhere else. Like, you know, you always hear the saying, like, never judge a fish by its ability to climb a tree. Well, I wanted to, like, I could see myself succeeding in areas that like, I wouldn't have been able to see without our program. And I think I see that in a lot of other people as well, where they get to see themselves succeed and thrive in a non-traditional academic setting, which I think is vital to our program as a whole. It makes, I think we've all been made into better, more well-rounded people as a result. We have, like I said, more friends with people we wouldn't have had before. We value things that we wouldn't have even considered before. And band personally, it has made me want to be a leader when I thought I would just sort of spend my life in the background watching other people do things. I want to lead and help people because of band, because I get to be a part of that and I get to help all of these people because I want them to have the amazing experience with our music department that I have had. I think that we need to make sure that they can have the same experiences that we've had because we know that it's been so awesome and we know that they deserve it too. Thank you.
Nathaniel Engel, please.
Nathaniel Engel, 4631 West Woodward Drive. I'm also speaking on behalf of our music department. Give me one second. The first time I ever got to meet Ms. Allison Um Hafer was through a frantic email when I was nervous that I was never going to be able to join Color Guard my freshman year. It was something my sister had wanted me to join because she was in marching band herself. Throughout my entire experience with Guard, I continued to participate and support our group because what I received was support. Day in and day out, I gave my all because when my teachers were proud of me, I was proud of myself. No other teacher has shown me love and support than the way my music teachers have. Mr. Dunmeier, Ms. Um Hafer, Mr. Warner and Ms. Miracle. When I was stressed about the reality of life, when my father was diagnosed with cancer after my mom passed away from it, when I was stressed with getting ready for college, these teachers never failed to put a smile on my face or show me support. When I was in the summer between my freshman and sophomore year, I got to experience completely new country because of this. I got to experience Madison with my sister and Italy with my sister. There have been numerous times where we got to go to different places because of the funding that we were able to receive. We were able to experience these because we had the opportunity to. I had experienced a lot more fun things with my sister than I never thought I would be able to do. Sorry, I'm crying. My sister got her senior year cut because of COVID, to which I became captain my senior year in order to prove to her that this was something I could do on my own. My sister has been supporting me throughout this entire experience along with my teachers. I'm sorry. These teachers have supported me like no other teacher has. When I was struggling with life, they were always there to lend me a shoulder and were proud of me at every single opportunity that they could, even when it was a simple trick, like learning how to use a new equipment. There was no shy to the support that I had received. And these experiences I want other kids to experience, especially younger kids who are afraid, afraid to go to middle school, afraid to go to high school. They don't know what they want to do with their futures. The experiences that I got to experience is something I wish everybody would get to experience. Thank you.
Stella Naswiski. I hope I pronounced that correctly. That's a no, but very, thank you. But thank you for being kind.
Oh, okay. Hi, my name is Stella Nastolski. My address is 9873 West Elm Leaf Lane. Hi, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Stella and I'm a senior at Franklin High School this year. In the past four years, I've experienced a lot of different opportunities and challenges in the music department. Like Andy said before, we lost one of our teachers who left unexpectedly that many of us had known since middle school, even elementary school. My time at Franklin is coming to an end, but there are students that will follow me and that there are students behind me right now that still have time here at Franklin. And I think that that time is very, very valuable and I think there's a lot of talent in there. And if going with this budget cut happens and if losing teachers happen, I worry that you are losing a lot of students and a lot of talent. I, I've performed in the musicals at Franklin as well as the plays and I'm also in show choir and I'm the top female choir. A lot of us can agree that the music department has changed and shaped our lives. I stand here fully supporting everyone's journey while knowing that everybody is unique and everyone's journey with the music department is unique. I have had a love for Franklin High School, but I've also went through a lot of hard times in it. In my sophomore year, I came out as gay. And the feedback from a lot of my fellow peers was not always the nicest. Anywhere from, you know, hearing terms that were not very nice to having someone even bring a Bible to one of my classes to pray the gay away. And the music department was always like my safe place. Sorry. And the teachers are very much the ones who created that safe place for me. I struggled with my mental health as a result of a lot of like the things I experienced with the struggles after I came out. And I just want to say that like the teachers in the music department, my peers, the fellow students, those are the people that kept me coming back to Franklin when I wanted to leave. When I felt unsafe at school or when I felt like I wasn't really in a space to come to school, that's why I did. That's why I'm gonna graduate and that is why I'm still here today, is because of the teachers and because of this music department. And I do not think a budget cut is going to give the same access to the things that we need and to the things that 100% I will sit here and say changed my life and saved my life because I would not be here without the music department and the people and the teachers and the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. I think this says Greg Schroder. But your penmanship is just a little bit worse than mine.
I think it's just a little better than his.
Good evening, I'm Greg Schroder, 4227 West Pill Beach Court. Today, as many of my peers behind me here will be addressing the recent cuts within the Franklin Department and the recent announcements. So as we start here. So as we start here, we have a beautiful performing arts facility. I think we've all been in it at least once, twice, or multiple times. We've all witnessed what talent this school district has for us and what these students have been unleashed like crazy wild rabbits out of the doghouse been to do. We have amazing staff, Ms. Allison Umhefer, Mr. Joshua Warner, Mr. Chris Dunmire, Cheryl Miracle, Mr. Alexander Chilson, and Ms. Emily Knudsen. Without these teachers and staff, the music department would not be what it is today. As we currently stand, the music department, like Belle has mentioned, was at a retention rate of 40% pre-COVID. And like we said, we weren't able to play last year unless we were quite literally in big plastic bags that weren't very comfortable to note. And with this recent year and coming up, more people have been wanting to do this. We have been known as one of the better and one of the most well-renowned school districts in the country. If we're cutting these changes, how is this going to affect our economic stance in the education community? A part of this is A, we're getting a grand new grand piano by the end of this year, or the plans have been told. We have been so grateful for all the fundings that you have given us in the past years, such as our brand-new marching band trailer, which was just previewed last night, the sound equipment that we have been given to the marching band and the music department as a whole. Without these directors and without the families behind us, we would not be able to be where we are. For some interesting facts that you may have skipped over upon when making your decision with these instrumentation, staff, and overall judgments with cuts, is this year, for the first time in school history, the marching band, Saber Marching Band, has placed a podium position, as we previously mentioned. Within our invites, we have gotten many praises for who we are as a band and how we have been grown and how we've featured. I've talked to many Oak Creek students as these two bands have rivaled for many years. They have been shocked, proud, and even astonished with how much we've grown in their four years with our four years. We have come to make rivals respect us even higher in a community of music. If we were to cut these staff, where would that be? Thank you.
Thank you. Tiana Dubinsky, please.
Hi there, I'm Tiana Dubinsky, 10525 West Candlestick Lane. I was a music educator for 10 years, so I'm speaking on behalf of the same issue that all of the students are speaking on. I'm currently a parent in the Robinwood School District. I have two students that are two children that go to Robinwood and a two-year-old. I currently substitute teach in the Franklin School District, mainly at Robinwood, and have subbed many times for Mrs. Reinders, who's the music teacher at Robinwood. So, just a background on where I'm coming from. I wanted to just bring up a few points that are concerning to me about some of these decisions and possible cuts. My first point is that I feel that we are staging a narrative that the arts are not important in our school district and that we don't support them by making this decision. I worry that we are also sending a message to current music staff, which are very good, that we don't support them, that we don't, what they do doesn't benefit our school district, and they may leave. It is also going to very much affect the kinds of music educators that will apply to this school district. As a music educator myself, I wouldn't apply to a school district that I felt wasn't supported by the administration and the school board. So I worry that the program will not continue to succeed without the support it deserves. The students already brought this up, but the numbers that have gone down, I really have a hard time understanding how that can be judged over a COVID period that obviously very much affected. Students were virtual. Students couldn't sing for a whole year because of, you know, obvious reasons. That really can put a program down. It needs time to rebuild, and it needs the support to rebuild. And taking away staff isn't the support it needs. Having one choir teacher for sixth through 12th grade seems absurd to me. I couldn't imagine supporting a program this large with one choral director for all of those groups. And what's going to happen is that some of those groups are going to be dropped. You can't have as many choirs, they can't travel, they can't do all the things with one person. And that in turn is going to affect the program in the future. Lastly, I think taking orchestra out of the elementary schools, band and orchestral elementary schools has also been extremely detrimental. That's where children are introduced to instruments. Picking up an instrument for the first time is challenging and difficult, and doing it for the first time in sixth grade is frustrating. And without that initial experience in fourth and fifth grade, that can also be really damaging. And once again, we're saying it's just not as important. And I think all of these students have made it clear how important music education is, so, thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, please. Michelle, sorry.
Hey, guys. Oh, I'm just moved by all those lovely kids. Yeah, I wasn't even here about the music, but hey, you know, they deserve to be treated just like our beloved football team or what other sports. There's nobody taking away the money from them. So give those kids their, you know, teachers and their staff, whoever they need. Just another thing, still looking for transparency from our teachers to our parents. Looking to come to the open house next year, and when I ask a teacher, hey, what's your plan for this year? What curriculum are you using? What subjects are you going to be touching on? That they can give me something other than a generic website to Common Core Wisconsin or whatever it was, that's all I got last year. So nice syllabus in the middle school, even the elementary. You know, parents want to know what are going on in these classrooms. What are you guys teaching our children? Not only for, if it goes with our values, our beliefs, et cetera, et cetera, but how can we also supplement at home? Because I just figured my kids were getting threes and fours, they were fine. And as you guys know, they weren't fine. They knew how to take tests, that was what they knew how to do. So I'd like to see transparency given to the parents from our teachers, because I do have one student coming back next year, and that's what I would like to see. Also, with the transparency, I've mentioned it before, you guys post the Doc Board memo the day after today, so on Facebook, social media. Is there a chance that you guys can post that agenda the day before or even today on social media to remind parents? Parents would love to be reminded of things and say, oh, I should do that. And you would get more parent involvement, hopefully. Those are just my things, transparency and getting parents here not when it's a last-minute effort to save something, because then parents might be able to help not even have on the chopping block. It could have been prevented if we would have known this beforehand. Other than that, just transparency and give these kids their teachers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone who spoke. We are, we are talking about a budget, or at least preliminary budget, but we are not voting on, we are not voting on staff tonight. Nor was that ever planned. So if you're going to be waiting for, waiting for us to vote on something, we are not. And I'm sorry if there was confusion. Let's move on to the consent agenda, please. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Some moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. I oppose. Motion carries. School board announcements, does anybody have any announcements? School board calendar. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, May 25, 2022, at the ECC at 6:00. Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, June 22, 2022, at 6:00 as well. District Administrator update, Dr. Miller, please.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see particularly our students here tonight, so. I'd like to begin by thanking all our parent-teacher organizations and others who were so generous in their recognition of our staff last week. There are so many lovely treats and gifts given to our staff, and I can truly say that they were humbled and sincerely appreciative of that. I'd also like to acknowledge the gifts accepted this evening as part of the board agenda for our Saber Robotics Program. We received $5,000 from Rex Nord and $2,500 from Crohn's Manufacturing for travel and equipment. We have a highly successful robotics program. This past year, they won the Engineering Inspiration Award. And with that, they won semifinals and were able to travel to Texas for the world competition. This week, our students have been taking the MAPS assessment. The data we obtained from this assessment is going to be very useful to the district in determining how well we've achieved our goals in our coherence plan this year. For the remainder of my update, I'd like to take a few minutes to acknowledge that today is National School Nurses Day. Each school day, over 4,600 students, children come to this school district and attend school here. On any given day, there are some who feel unwell, and they stay home, while others come to us and let us know when they get here they don't feel so well. While in many instances at our elementary school, an ice pack works miracles. Believe me, I was at Robinwood this afternoon, and there must have been seven of them that went out after recess. Our school nurses are needed to provide training to our office staff and care for our more seriously unwell students. I've had the pleasure of working with two of the best nurses I've ever encountered in my life as a child in school and as an adult. Molly Call and Lori O'Neil are seriously our dynamic duo. Together, they work endlessly to make sure that the well-being of everyone in our school district is taken care of. They do this in a professional and empathetic manner. Their communication skills are excellent, and above all, they always act with kindness. Our entire school district is better because of Molly and Lori. Today is one day we formally recognize that, but I hope they both know how much we appreciate them every single day. So if Molly and Lori would come up, please, I'd like to give them a gift on behalf of the board and the school district. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Item 10, Reports, Presentations, and Other School Board Business. A, Approval of New Superintendent Hire. It's an action item, and I think maybe we should just have a vote, and then we will announce Annalee, she is in the room. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the new superintendent hire.
Some moved. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor. I oppose. Motion carries, thank you. Annalee, maybe you'll stand up. So I'm just going to read a little bit from the, from the communication that's going to go out shortly. The Board of Education is excited to announce that we have selected Mrs. Annalee Bennen to become the next superintendent of Franklin Public Schools. She was part of an exceptional pool of candidates, but the feedback about her from all interview groups echoed similar sentiments about Mrs. Bennen. Energy, teamwork, vision, drive, student-centered. We are very proud to vote for Mrs. Annalee Bennen as our new superintendent, and we look forward to her carrying on the great work that Franklin has done so far and carry us into the future. So, thank you. And thank you for being here. You are welcome to say a few words if you like, but you don't have to. Thank you. All right, Item B, Youth Mental Health Report. Ms. Cody and Ms. Loreno, please.
So many emotions already.
I mean, I'm going to grab my tissues.
They've been passed around.
That's lovely.
Well, while we are getting our technology set up, I can just begin by thanking you for the opportunity for us to provide an update on how we are supporting students in the area of mental health. With me this evening, I have Ms. Kristin Loreno. She is the Student Services Coordinator for the district. And actually, before she stepped into this role, she was also a member of the District SCL team, who did a lot of, laid a lot of the groundwork for our current supports and programming that we currently have. She served as a school psychologist at that time. So has a very rich history here. And I asked Christine to sit with me so I didn't have to be by myself. I sure will. All right, sorry about that, it has worked in here before, so.
Do any of the students know how to fix the computer problem?
They're all back there, like, itching to come up here now. It is fun, because there are some former students from Southwood Glen who are in next. So that is absolutely fantastic.
This will give you all a moment to read the announcement about the new superintendent that I think is just being sent as we speak.
It did, it just dropped.
There we go. Thank you. All right, so as we begin, as I mentioned earlier, we have been working on, are really focused on social and emotional development and support of our students and staff, really over the course of the last three years. And one of the initial tasks of the group was to establish our vision for social and emotional learning here in Franklin. So before we dive into, like, why we're doing this and, or what we're doing and how, just wanted to give you a reminder of our vision statement. And then, again, as a reminder to, as we work our way through our report this evening, we are the recipients of the School-Based Mental Health Grant. We are at the tail end of year one of a two-year grant. And so many of the professional learning and the supports that we also are sharing this evening are supported through the funds that we received through the School-Based Mental Health Grant. So this is our goal as we utilize the funds for the grant. So before we get into what we're doing, we thought it was important to take a step back and take a look at the why. So this is data, much of the So this is data, much of this was provided in your report, but as you can see here, mental health by the numbers, the numbers are pretty impactful. So research, again, is indicating that we continue to see an uptick in our mental health needs. And again, I think that was even evident when you think about some of what our students even shared this evening, how important it is that we are supporting an environment that will allow students to safely come to school, knowing that their social-emotional needs are going to be met. So again, as you look at the statistics that are up here, many of the statistics were really gathered at a national level through the National Alliance of Mental Illness, but there's also Wisconsin-level organization as well. So you can see some of those statistics, how they look at the national level, as well as what that means for us here in the state of Wisconsin. And then, a pretty impactful statistic for us as well is looking at the number of students who have been serviced by our Student Services staff members this year. That's not a number that we have necessarily collected over the previous years, but this year, that was actually part of, part of our increasing our data literacy and how we're utilizing data to inform our decision-making. So the 600 students who have received services, that's not just the student who comes down, you know, because they're having a bad day and maybe needs to see the counselor. These are, you know, students that are receiving services kind of over the course of time. And then, in addition to that data that was collected, there was a national survey of parents. And so you can see here, the response of parents, and the 77% of parents said that they are thinking about their child's mental health, and then 44% are concerned about their child's mental health. And I would think that that is an increase as a result of COVID. I don't have that data prior to COVID. And then you can see more specifically, some of the areas where they've seen an increase in their feelings. And much of this is similar to what we are also seeing in Franklin Public Schools. We, kind of on a broader sense, when we did send the survey out to community members earlier, asking about how they would like to see us spend the ESER funds, mental health was a priority. So if we would, I'd be interested to hear what our parents would have to say, but they did obviously address or identify this as an area of need. So now we'll go into the what that we're doing now that we've gone through the why. So again, we really do want to provide a comprehensive system for supporting the development of our social-emotional learning, of our skills, of our students. So through, with a comprehensive approach, the foundation is really looking at that universal lens. So what are we providing all of our students in order to, again, create that environment and develop their skills? So the universal supports really do create the structure for positive relationships, a climate of safety and belonging in the classroom, as well as a support for the skills that students need to be successful in school and in life. And so when we think about these conditions, they're also really critical in supporting an equitable learning environment for all of our students. So there are efforts that we continue to do, and so this highlight, this slide here really highlights some of the newer things that we are doing, as well as the next steps. So as a reminder, the definition of social and emotional learning is the process through which children and adults understand and manage emotions, set and achieve positive goals, feel and show empathy for others, establish and maintain positive relationships and make responsible decisions. So there are core competencies that we focus on. Those are self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. So again, part of the universal is explicit teaching and learning experiences through guidance lessons, have implementing practices such as community circles. So in all of our elementary schools, they start their day with community circles, again, to form those relationships and create a safe environment in the classroom, as well as some other ongoing actions. One area of note is that we are just embarking on, and we have spring of 2022 here, but it's already May. So within the next few weeks, we are going to be, going through, implementing a universal screener pilot. So we talk a lot about data and using that to inform our decision-making and our programming on behalf of students. And so one piece of a comprehensive social and emotional learning system is gathering data, like what do we know about our students and their current social and emotional needs and mental health? So the universal screener is one of the areas that the Student Services staff focused on during professional development this year, and we narrowed this down to two screeners, two tools. And both tools, one maybe more than the other, are also, have been utilized, or are currently being utilized in lots of local districts already. So we do have the opportunity to touch base with them to see how that is implementing their programming. But here in Franklin, the pilot is going to be, take place in one classroom in each school, and we have the Student Services staff members in the school actually working with the teacher around preparation. And Kristin's really been doing a lot of the technical work as far as getting the screener up and running. But it takes, each screener takes maybe five minutes per student, based on what we know. There is a small bank of questions that we ask students. We communicate, we've communicated with those classrooms, or if we have not, we will be the classrooms who are getting involved, and parents do have the option to opt their children out, and they can also ask for additional information from us about, you know, the assessment. So we're looking forward to learning more about how that universal screener can actually, again, support decision-making moving forward universally, as well as what areas we might need to identify and build our skill set in order to support students, like here in the classroom.
Can I ask a quick question on the universal screener? Is the goal of this just to provide aggregate data to guide district-level curricular decisions? Or is the goal to actually also identify students who might be in need?
It's both.
Great.
Yes. Yes, it is.
So the data is tied to a student?
It is.
It is?
Yeah. So. So we have been, again, you know, learning a lot about what this means to utilize a universal screener, what kind of communication goes around it, how do we document that information? So we are going, starting very small, so that we can learn and just be very well-informed and gather information along the way. So then, our next steps beyond the universal screener, we are going to take a step back and look at our SCL competencies and how we're really integrating that into our planning for academics, as well as just part of our school environment. This morning, I was with a little, another one at Robinwood, working through a bus issue with a student. And we, as part of the reflection process, the student, you know, we walked through some of these core competencies, and she did identify that she, what really was kind of struggling with self-management at the time, because she struggled with impulse control, because she, you know, like hit a sandwich out of another student's hand and then kicked him. So, you know, everything was fine, but she was able to identify, like, ooh, I really, this is something I really need to think about as, you know, just my impulse. Like, so how can I, you know, develop, are there things that I can do to help myself in those situations when I want to do something I shouldn't? So that's just a very small, small example. You can see the rest of what we have there in terms of next steps. So youth suicide prevention, we are looking at the middle and high school, building a peer leadership program, and that is something that we have really talked about for several years as a need and a priority, and now the Mental Health Grant is providing the funds for actually our capacity to be able to implement that. And then also professional learning for teachers and classrooms at multiple levels, K-12, I don't know if we have any Ks now that I think about it, with thinking about family diversity, LGBTQ+, so that our schools are truly inclusive, and we're speaking common language as a staff, and we understand the diversity of our families who are stepping into our classrooms. So we know how to support them and include them with, again, just with consistency throughout the district, as we continue to grow in our diversity, and then regrounding in trauma-sensitive schools.
All right. Hi. Another one of our proactive universal supports over the last three years has been providing youth mental health first aid training to staff, as well as expanding to community members. So I know you've heard a little bit about youth mental health first aid before, but just as a refresher reminder, in case you haven't, you can think of youth mental health first aid analogous to physical first aid, where we are training, myself, I'm a trainer, as well as one of our elementary school social workers and elementary school psychologists. So we train individuals on really how to, like, when you think about a physical crisis, you're teaching them, and Molly and Lori can speak to it more, but really understanding how to recognize signs and symptoms that there's a physical, that there, there's a safety concern going on, and how do you respond in the moment until appropriate help can arrive? So similarly, with youth mental health first aid, we train individuals on recognizing signs and symptoms of mental health issues, as well as crises, and giving them a toolbox to know how to respond to students, or youth that they come encounter with in their community or even in their personal or family lives. So over the past three, three years, we've had the opportunity to train many, many staff members. We've trained a total of 185 individuals in our community, and that has ranged from educational assistants, office staff, general education teachers, special education teachers, a broad array of individuals within our school district. We've also trained, not in a couple of years, but we also trained some of our police and fire, because they also come in contact with our students. And this year, we had the opportunity to extend the training through some of the funding with the Mental Health Grant to parents and community members. And that has been incredibly well-received and valued, to the point where we didn't always have all of the community members come to the training in the end, but we had so many where we had a waitlist for each of the initial trainings that went out. So we want to continue to expand there. We, through the Mental Health Grant, we do have a goal of training 150 individuals. This year, it was a little tough to train as many staff members, just with guest-teacher shortage. We offered all of the courses in the evening, so there's not as much availability, but we hope to continue to offer that training next year, whether it be in the evening or during the school day, but we look to also expand to more parents and community and other community organizations. We've had other people reach out to us from local nursing, you know, people have an interest in wanting to build their capacity to support our students' mental health. So as many people as we can touch and provide those tools, they can support all of our students. So, and this summer, we are training a group of coaching staff, because I think, as you heard from our students, some of those programs that they're in, whether it be music, athletics, those are the people that they go to, and we want them to be prepared and well-equipped to support students. So you can kind of see our grand total of how many we've trained, and we hope to continue to expand with the goal next year of meeting that 150. This year, we only trained about 70-some people, so half of our goal. All right, so Mrs. Cody spoke to really those universal supports, but in addition to those universal supports that we embed for all of our students, we do provide a continuum of supports to students who need some more intensive services, who might just need something like a small group that they can work with to build some different social and emotional skills, or more intensive one-on-one individual support with potentially one of our school psychologists, counselors, social worker, or who might need really some wraparound services that include not only a school-based team, but also community mental health providers to support their well-being. So I'm just going to speak to a little bit of our work that we've done with more of those selective and intensive supports and systems of care. So Mrs. Cody alluded to this, but we did have time during each professional development day this year, our Student Services team, so again, school counselors, psychs, and social workers. We had four hours together each professional development day, which not only allowed us to work towards some of those universal components and work on that, the universal screening pilot, but really refine, again, and how are we identifying students in need of additional supports? What data are we using? What processes? And once we identify students, do teachers know where to come? Do they know how to reach out to people? Then from there, what happens? Do, you know, what does that meeting look like? What kind of data are we collecting to monitor the effectiveness of the intervention or support we're providing the student? So we worked really hard to refine that process this year, and that included a presentation to staff in each building that reminded them and re-grounded them in the supports available and how to access supports for students. We discussed, you know, really parent involvement and how you bring in parent voice and bring them into the team and part of that planning process. We also developed like a teacher referral form that collected some consistent baseline data, again, using that, that what kind of information, how did we get here? How do we know that we have a concern about a student? Which also led to some of that need for the universal screening data potentially. And we also established a secure documentation system where we're really documenting the interventions that we are providing students and monitoring progress through that. So especially as students transition from grade to grade, the staff that need to know, mainly the Student Services staff, can build upon the work that was done with a student prior to that. So in addition to really strengthening our internal referral, we call it referral pathways, you don't have to think of it as a formal referral, but really, how do we identify and support students? We've done some work in our continuum of supports of really building our Student Services staff capacity in terms of purchasing some additional intervention resources that may build upon their previous training, as well as having our Student Services staff engage in additional professional development opportunities in areas that they identified that they needed to grow to support students. So for example, we are, all of our, most of our Student Services staff just engaged in a training about how to support students who are experiencing grief and loss, so that they could build their capacity to support students in school who are impacted by grief and loss. So some of our next steps are to continue providing training for identified interventions. So another example of that is we've identified check and connect, it's a type of intervention, but really, it's another support for students that we will have staff engaging in next year, as well as other areas that the team identified through this process. And we are going to engage in some professional learning and development around our actual problem-solving conversations. So when we come to the table to discuss and figure out supports for a student, what does that conversation sound and look like? How can we build commonality, common language, as Mrs. Cody alluded to, and really be, you know, data-driven, but like, how can we just really refine, again, those conversations, so that we really are working hard to support the student? And then we're going to engage in that ongoing reflection and valuation of our referral system and pathway as a whole, and continue to make adjustments like we have this year, continue to identify areas and training that we need to grow, as well as building any other partnerships or systems. So something that is very exciting that you may have heard about, but that also came from some of this work, is the need to continue to expand our community partnerships. So as part of the Mental Health Grant, we've also had staff not only collect data on the number of students that they provide services for, but also how many students do they end up referring to other community agencies, because there is another level of care needed? And it's reported that about 200, that about 250 referrals to community agencies were made from our Student Services staff this year. So that, again, highlights the, you know, level for, or that level of need and continued focus here. So from some of those conversations, and with the support of many people here, we established a new partnership with Advocate Aurora for both a student and family assistance program and employee assistance program. And this is another way for us to break down barriers for families and students to have access to mental health support. So this program, in very brief form, it provides free support for students and everybody in their household, as well as staff in those in their household, to four, up to four free one-hour sessions per issue related to mental health concerns, as long as some other, with some other supports, so like work-life balance supports, or legal and financial consultation, but mainly it's providing access to our families as a starting point. So sometimes it's really hard to go through insurance and really make, make all those different phone calls and try to find the right provider, or go to a pediatrician and figure out who's in your network or who is a referral. This is something that families have access to in the moment, even if they're experiencing a crisis or just don't know what to do, they have access to somebody they can call. So thanks to so many people here that's supported that. So that is very exciting, and we'll be collecting a lot of information on the usage of that. So how many of our families access that too?
And where did they, this process take place? Is it virtual or?
It is dominantly virtual, but they also offer in-person sessions. So it kind of comes down to preference of the, of the family. If, if it is easier, more accessible to engage in a virtual therapeutic session, they will do that, but they also offer in-person sessions.
But it's in their own offices or it's not?
It's in their own offices, yes. It would be in their.
Providers in the community?
Yes, yes, it would be with their community, providers in the community.
When you're using the universal screening, you know, especially, I know, we are getting some Ukrainians who are coming from the war zone, Afghan people have been coming in, you know, refugees especially. know, refugees especially who have, the kids who have basically almost PTSD because of the trauma they have seen with the war in Ukraine or Afghanistan. How, how is your universal screening? Do you see a lot of kind of, you know, like almost most of the kids have some PTSD because, you know, they're completely coming from a different zone which we can't even imagine, you know? And does that data really help us kind of, you know, go deep into, you know, because that's a different kind of, you know, children coming from a different background?
So we have yet to engage, the pilots, the actual assessments are going to occur probably starting next week between the end of the year. So we have yet to collect the data to have, I guess, information on, you know, what does it tell us about our students? And do we have a lot of students who are indicating? That's, that's kind of the information that we're looking for, is what are the number of students in a, in a given classroom, which is why we're starting so small? Because we do want to be able to respond to any needs that are identified in the universal screening. And we just don't know, because it will be a combination of a teacher will be filling out, you know, some information, as well as a student, and we'll be looking at the data to understand, you know, what does that tell us? Does it, does it mostly identify students that we already are providing support for? Or is it identifying students who maybe struggle more in, with internalizing pieces that wouldn't be as apparent to us? And that is important, because then we can proactively provide support. So I, I do think that there will be an impact, just in terms of, if you think of the pandemic, if we have, you know, refugee, all of that. I just think we are yet to know what that will look like in terms of universal screening, but we want to be very cautious and able to respond, which is why we're starting off very small. And then I think we'll make decisions based on the data that we receive and, and, you know, what were the number of students identified? What are we noticing in the trends? You know, who are the students are again? And then we'll make decisions as far as next steps about what our capacity is to continue or expand on that universal screening. So I know it doesn't answer your question, but I do think it's very interesting, and I think that we'll have, we'll be able to make a lot of connections.
Yeah, and it's really just, it is one piece, it's one trigger, I guess, one piece of information about a student. So we, we, you know, those relationships we're forming with families are still critical. You know, so the, it's, it's one, it's just one component. So it, I mean, it's a very good question.
And I think, as you alluded, I think COVID had made it more worse, you know, definitely kind of, you know?
Absolutely.
It's like a double lammie, you know?
Yes.
And I think that speaks also to the universal component, being very, like we need to be sensitive to our students on a universal level and be very trauma-informed. So that is some training that we've engaged in that you mentioned we need to re-ground in, because having some of those universal supports and understanding trauma and understanding how that impacts children. We can set up classrooms and do universal supports as well without needing to identify necessarily, you know, who are individual students who have experienced some pieces, but that we're already thinking about that on the front end before we even, you know, before students even walk in the door. And then just one other piece with community partnerships, we do continue to have a partnership as another layer. So you can think of Aurora as more, that will be more of a short-term counseling support for families that is available. And if a higher level of care is needed, Aurora would refer them to another level of care, which could potentially be our partnership. They could refer them to Clinical Psychology Associates. But this is our partnership where we have onsite clinics that are at Countrydale, Pleasant View, the middle school and the high school. So we have therapists serving within each of those buildings, but all students have access to that across the district. And this partnership continues to grow, and they continue to respond to the expanding needs of our community. So just at a quick glance, you can see here that we have had, even from last year at this time, we have had 131 additional students and families who have sought support through Clinical Psychology Associates. So it continues to be an incredible asset and break down barriers for access to support for our families. And so we will continue with that partnership, because I think the, the numbers speak volumes. And they are continually assessing intake levels and how can they meet the needs of students. There's very rarely times where there has been a waitlist. I think right now, there is a waitlist for some students, but they respond to that pretty quickly, seek to hire new staff. So they work really hard so that it is a different experience than going to some other community providers where you could wait months to receive services.
What is interesting with many of these, like we, the community partnership now has been in place for a few years. It was several years ago where we focused on trauma-sensitive schools practices, and all of this was pre-COVID. So like you were just saying, it, I mean, things have really just been magnified. And so it's kind of taken on a whole new meaning for us in terms of the importance of really being able to provide that level of support that students need just in time. So. So the final piece of our presentation is, is the ES3 Grant Shareout. And so we have come every year, and we've usually coupled this with our mental health reports. And so we are sunsetting. The ES3 Grant is the Enhancing Social and Emotional Skills in IEP, students with IEPs for three years. So that's the ES3. And this is really, again, another level of how we support students. When we talk about, we have the universal, and then we have the, the selective, and then the intensive. So these are students who are really, just their social and emotional needs are, come through in behaviors that really create barriers for them to be able to engage in meaningful learning with their partners. So this is just a very brief video that provides kind of the scope of the work of the team, and then how we'll utilize that moving forward.
We are currently in our third year of the ES3 Grant in Franklin Public Schools. At the time that we applied for the grant, one of the tactics of our three-year coherence plan focused on closing achievement gaps for students, tending specifically to the components of our social and emotional learning framework, K-12. The coherence plan is our big-picture commitment to living all of our core values here in Franklin. When I think about the work of the ES3 Grant, it really is focused on three of our core values: equity, stewardship, and wellbeing. The value of equity is reflected in the focus of our ES3 Grant, because we define equity as our promise to ensure access to opportunities and resources for all individuals, so that we can guarantee an equitable educational experience for all students. So the ES3 Grant really helps us eliminate barriers that may be present due to social and emotional learning needs and behaviors.
As Franklin's internal coach for the ES3, I knew coaching would be an integral part of the program. So I really appreciated the various layers of professional development opportunities provided around coaching. Not only has the PD helped me to develop and deepen my skills as a coach, particularly in the areas of coaching teams and coaching for equity, but also I believe that the coaching will help to inform our district as we move forward in developing our coaching culture and coaching systems. Collective responsibility and collaborative teams were an important part of the ES3 work. Over the three years, Franklin formed 12 ES3 teams across six out of seven buildings in our district. Teams not only shared the work, but were challenged to expand their learning within their buildings.
Within that first year of the grant, we recognized a need to develop our teams. We had new psych involved, new cross-cat teachers, classroom teachers, new students that we welcomed into our building that we saw had some different needs that we weren't used to addressing at, at our building at that time. So we took some time to establish what our team was going to do, how, how we were going to work together to help all of our students be successful here at Countrydale.
I think the ES3 Grant was really great for working as a team, and I think it was awesome that we were able to open up the opportunity to a variety of team members. And I think they also ultimately benefited the child by giving more opportunities for parent involvement. I think we did really well in that portion, and I, I ended up learning a lot.
Teams work to determine which evidence-based practice would best match each learner's needs. On the left, you will see some of the evidence-based practices used. Once selected, teams develop progress monitoring tools in order to collect data to inform their next steps at their monthly team meetings.
I think it helped the team be very cohesive and working together and held us accountable. Although we hold ourselves accountable on a daily basis, this just added that extra layer, layer of accountability. And we were able to, you know, use the data to benefit the student, and also to reach out to the parents and have that parent connection to help the student as well. And the training provided was really great, and we were able to apply that in a lot of different ways as we went along.
Several teams built an active participation of parents through selecting parent-implemented interventions. Another outreach feature was when ES3 teams across buildings combined their efforts by writing a weekly article for newsletters called Happy at Home. These articles included tips, strategies, games, and resources for families to support mental health and wellbeing during the pandemic.
I think it was important that the grant provided us the time and the resources to really come together as a team. We were able to take data, determine which evidence-based practice was appropriate, and then kind of tailor that to the student's specific goals from their IEPs, which was great. It gave us like that systematic approach to things. I also think it was really important when we were able to really engage with parents. And so we were able to implement interventions at home and at school, and we really saw that the student was able to make gains in both environments.
Progress has made especially here in this, this year's first grade year, back in, in-person learning has just been phenomenal. We've seen, we, at Christmas time, we did get to see a few of our relatives, a lot of them commented on how, how much progress had JJ had made since the previous Christmas, and how mature he was, and, you know, and everything. So, and, you know, we've been seeing lots of gains, both socially and academically. So, I mean, I can't say enough what everyone on the team.
One beneficial component of the ES3 was the opportunity to participate in professional learning opportunities. While we did participate in some new learning opportunities, such as coaching for equity, learning about interoception, and CERTS, we largely focused on broadening and deepening our skills in the areas in which we already had established some foundational learning, such as PECs and social thinking.
I was able to partake in some professional development training that directly related to the goals that we set for my student. I was able to learn new strategies to help him with functional communication, and to be able to implement certain systems throughout the course of his day and across different settings. This information I have learned, I've been able to take and use with other students, and will be able to use with every student I work with in the future.
As an SLP, I felt like I had the foundational knowledge of what we were working on with the student, but then being able to attend the training, I really could dive deeper into what those professionals were teaching us about it. So not only the speech class that we're teaching us, but the people in other roles. And then going back and really learning the specifics of the programs could let us plan ahead for the students, and even think about other students or potential students, and where we want to head with them, with these types of programs. So it was really beneficial to learn the specifics of what we were doing.
In terms of outcomes for ES3 students, the majority met or exceeded their individual goals. Generally speaking, we saw increases in student engagement, independence, and decreases in instances of unsafe physical behaviors, resulting in decreased numbers of seclusion and restraint.
I have heard members of ES3 teams from different schools showing evidence-based practices with each other. As teams come together on behalf of students, the collaborative process has also been important so that we can replicate those processes as part of the SEL side of our multi-level systems of support. And then most importantly, beliefs about students are shifting, which is fundamental in the important work of ensuring that teams have the efficacy to be there for students when they need us the most.
As we wrap up the grant, we continue the process of planning for SEL in Franklin. We are sincerely grateful for the ES3 Grant and coaches for partnering with us for the past three years.
So that concludes our report for this evening. We, like we said, the grant itself is sunsetting, but many of the systems, the structures, the beliefs, much of this will continue to live in our, again, like I mentioned earlier, the multi-level systems of support. When, when we do need to approach planning for students, you know, we have the capacity to do that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Is the school-based mental health grant renewable? Do you plan to renew it? Because it seems like many of the programs that you're piloting are dependent on that grant, and it always makes you nervous when programs are grant-based.
So it's a two-year grant. The, the support of the grant is really helping us create the foundation, like so to, to engage staff in professional development or purchase resources. So we'll be able to sustain that then, you know, internally.
There's no, yeah, there's no funding tied to anything that would be necessarily ongoing.
Got it, thank you.
Well, the teams are still in place, will continue.
How big is your team? How many school psychologists, social workers, and?
Seven.
That I'm missing?
I'm sorry, seven school psychologists, two social workers, counselors, we have one, two, three, seven, seven counselors. That's it.
How's that feel?
Well, you know, we, we, we always feel like we could have more. What I would say is the, the staff members we have in place are highly skilled, they are learners, so every, you know, they see the needs of kids, and, you know, they're willing to continue to learn and grow, so that we can continue to be more impactful in the work that we do every day.
Okay. Handle that a little bit.
Anyone else have further questions? Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Preliminary budget assumptions, Mr. Millsor, please.
At this time of the year, most of the factors that are figured into the budget have to be estimated. The first one would be enrollment, and we're estimating that we will have 25 additional resident students in the district next year, and the board approved open enrollment seats so that we would keep that open enrollment population level. Looking at the federal aid related to the pandemic, we are still using the elementary and secondary school funds for SR2 and SR3. We'll be using those next year and possibly the year after. And we'll know those, excuse me, we'll know those amounts as part of the budget process when we bring the budget forward. On state aid and the revenue limit, in the two-year budget that was passed by the state, they did not increase the revenue limit per student. And so we have no additional funds for two years per student. And even though, the way the formula works, even though the state can say that they put a lot more money into education, it really just flows right through the school district and provides property tax relief rather than any educational opportunities for students. The state did increase the reimbursement for special education from 28.2% to 30%, but the way it's being paid out this year, our increase could be maybe $8,000. So over two years, that's our increase. In equalization aid, we, the community grew at about 5.99% versus the state, which grew at 6.62, which makes us appear poorer in that calculation, which is not a bad thing, because then the state should give us more money than they otherwise would have done, especially if we had had higher growth. So that would work in our favor. Looking at retirees, we have 11 teachers retiring this year. Seven would be about our average, but then if we look at last year, we had only four teachers retire, so it's kind of evening out, I think. And we have seven other staff retiring. Salaries, we've entered into wage negotiations, but have not completed those yet. On the benefits side, the self-funded health insurance plan, the rates will increase by 3% for '22, '23, and the district will be changing from fully insured dental to self-insured dental for a 5% decrease.
What is a 3% increase? What rate of what? Because if you're self-insured, that the?
We're increasing, yeah, we're increasing. Yeah, we're increasing the rates, the rates that we're paying ourselves, those like a premium equivalent, we're increasing that by 3%. On the long-term capital improvement trust fund, first of all, we had that facility study that was conducted by Plunkett Raceh Architects and JP Cullen. We're following and starting with their recommendations of making sure that our building envelopes are secure. And we're starting at Countrydale Pleasant View and the high school this summer, doing tuck pointing, caulking repairs. And getting that done, also putting in a new fire alarm system at Countrydale. And new fire alarm systems are so extensive that that will take them most of the summer to put that in because every, every enunciator, the thing that blinks or whatever, in every room has to be wired as well as the new system put in. So it's a, it's a big job. So although we would have liked to do more of them in the summer, it looks like we'll be able to do one per summer. At the high school, we have some special needs casework that we're bringing up to ADA compliance. And then we have a lot of ceiling-mounted projectors really all over the district. But we're starting at the high school to replace those with wall displays similar to this for the classrooms so that it's just easier to see everything that's out there. The projectors, really, the quality is deteriorating. Some of them are quite bad at this point. So we're replacing those. Also creating two mothers rooms at the high school. At Countrydale, we're replacing the hallway shelving coat hook for student belongings and coats and all of that. All of that shelving is between 50 and 70 years old. So it's done really well, but it's time. So we'll continue moving forward with all of these projects unless the board would happen to disagree with any one of these projects. And we are looking at having all of these done this summer.
Thank you for teaching us the new word enunciator as it relates to fire alarms. I know you can't give us any details about your salary negotiations, but I wonder if there's any thought to adjusting our premium that we pay ourself as a way to sort of meet the fact that, whatever the CPI, what's the, what's the word for the consumer price index has gone up so dramatically as a way to sort of?
Well, we would just be shorting, shorting ourselves in what we believe we need to pay for our health insurance claims.
But we did better last year than we thought we would.
We did. That's what allowed us to have a 3% increase instead of a nine or 10 that we projected. So we're already doing very well there, but this is what we need to pay for our claims. And we would not want to start down the road of shorting that and eating into our fund balance to pay for health insurance claims.
Fair enough.
Jim, you, at the beginning of this report, talked about the state budget and how that's kind of obviously limits us quite a bit. Do you anticipate, or I guess maybe the question is like, what do you anticipate might, might be impacted the most by a decrease in the budget? Like in terms of student programming or staffing or capital improvements or, you know, any of those kind of things? Like if this, if this state budget continues to have less for us, what are, where are we in terms of, like, what are those big things that are going to be impacted?
For next year, we'll be fine. Year after that, we'll be fine. But the state can't do this again to give us zero. And really what they told us was use your federal money to get by and we'll kind of see you on the other end of that and then we'll give you money. And they have money. They have hundreds, millions of dollars that they could use for this. They just have refused to do it. So I'm, I'm hoping that in the next biennium, they will use that funding. And I think that's where it's most important, that not only the board gets involved in supporting that effort statewide to get that money to come to school districts, but to work with businesses that will sign on to that because that will make an impact with the legislators to see that businesses are saying they couldn't survive under these circumstances. How could a school district survive with four years with no increase, with high inflation? Otherwise, if they didn't do that, we would be looking at decreases across the board.
But for right now, where our budget is and what you predict for this next year, we shouldn't have any major, like noticeable tangible impact?
Right. The other piece of it is that we're still kind of going back to pre-COVID levels of staffing across the board. And I would say that, you know, we reacted when we needed to. We added staff where we needed to so that we could carry out our plans. And over time, people have gotten used to that. Extra staffing in the office, extra staffing for this and that. And it's, we're really having to educate the staff that, okay, let's remember now in 1920 when we started, this wasn't the kind of staffing plan we had.
You mean 2020? Please tell me you meant 2020.
2019, 2020. So the 1920 school year.
1920, I was like, what?
He's been in the district a long time, but not that long.
I think he meant 1920, I think. I think he meant 1920.
Yeah, it was, it was the school year 1920. I wasn't reaching back that far.
I get it, I get it. Oh goodness.
Any other questions, Mr. Millsor?
So timeline-wise, we'll see the first draft next, early June?
In, right, the June board meeting. That'll be the first draft. Final draft won't be until the end of October.
Anyone else? Thank you.
I'd like to actually thank Mr. Millsor for making us sail financially. Today, we are the district, you know, in, because of your hard work. So thank you so much, you know, your vision and your, you know, thing has helped us sail, you know, with all the so many turbulences we are right now, financially really secure, you know. So thank you so much for what you have done.
My pleasure.
I agree. Thank you.
Keep the thing safe since 1920.
I need that tagline.
Thank you, Maxu. School Board Liaison reports, Personnel and Policy, Policy 5313, Communicable Diseases, Dr. Khan, Ms. Call, Ms. O'Neil. They're prescient, they know when they're coming up. Please.
We had this policy.
Thank you.
Communicable disease reviewed last in June of 2020. And we are making some, this minor changes in the wording of the policy, also removing lice infestation as a communicable disease as such, you know. So I'm sure everybody had got a chance to read through the policies. And our excellent nurses are here to answer any questions, so.
Glad to see head lice removed from the communicable disease policy. That's a good move.
Didn't know that we removed it just as it is not a communicable or an infectious disease. It's, we respond to it as in insect infestation as directed by all of the medical leading bodies. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions about the policy? Now, I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy 5313 as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Other further, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Personnel and Policy, Policy number 5319, Nursing Delegation. Please.
So the nursing delegation is basically a policy where the nurse can delegate, you know, a specific staff member or, you know, to do X, Y, and Z, where still the nurse is responsible, you know, or accountable for whatever happens, you know. And thank you for your comment during the committee, comment, you know. We have added the language of the unlicensed assistant personnel to that policy where I'll let the nurses talk more about it. There are, because it's considered statute, this has to be done by a registered nurse, you know, but they can designate, you know, a, for example, aide or someone like who is kind of, and they specifically have to define what they can do in their role as such. So Molly and, if you can just talk about more about that.
Sure. So we work with, of course, many unlicensed assistant personnel who are often very willing and provide excellent care for many of our students on a daily basis who have diabetes. They provide injections of insulin, say, at lunchtime. And all of that falls under our license due to the training we provide. So there are many routes of medications that we train staff to administer. Some of them are a little bit more invasive than others. And certainly know that we work with staff and ask they're willing us to learn those tasks. And sometimes they're very willing to learn and then post-training a little bit apprehensive potentially. But we need them to ensure that they're letting us know if there's a level of discomfort in the care that we're directing to them, if that makes sense. So certainly we have staff members, like I said, in our health rooms that work under our license and receive that training and direction from us. So we continue to work with staff daily to continue to ensure that our students are cared for during the day on field trips and in all of those pieces, so.
So what about, let's say, the situation that Mrs. Karalovich mentioned? What would you do if a student potentially required medical support and you didn't have any of your non-licensed professionals able to provide or willing to?
Sure.
Provide that level of support? What would you have done in that situation to get, to allow that child to participate in the field trip?
Absolutely. And we have that situation occur frequently depending on the needs of the child. And we have a sub-nursing pool that's made up of care partners and LPNs and a few registered nurses that we can tap into to help support some of our students with complex needs. And of course, Molly and I are, we've gone on many field trips to help support some of our most complex kids. And truly, that's some of our very favorite times to get out in the community with these young students and know that we had an LPN on a field trip today with a student who had some complex needs. And I met with her prior to going and ensured she had everything she needed. And they're always aware that they can call us at any point with any questions that would arise. But know that we certainly would never want a child to be unable to attend a field trip due to our inability to care for them. So we will rearrange our schedules if that would ever come up to ensure that those kiddos can go on field trips. And certainly, I think if we were made aware that somebody was uncomfortable or that based on our assessment of the training, that somebody wasn't able to meet the qualifications of what we're requesting that they are able to carry out. And it's not just medication administration. You know, it could be dressing changes, it could be monitoring certain things in a student's status that if we don't evaluate that they're able to carry out those tasks, then we would make alternate plans for that student's needs to be met.
Well, certainly the fact that they're, they're operating under your license.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, that's like the, the policy of delegation, right? It's like, you know, you've got your five rights of medication administration, you've got your five rights of delegation, making sure that you are delegating the right thing to the right person, the right time, you know, that whole process because they are working under your supervision.
So you do training and also follow-up. It's not just one and done, you're constantly evaluating.
Yeah.
And, and from an HR perspective, it is, you know, explained to newer employees that this could be part of their job. So upon taking the job, it's, they're informed that you may be asked to do these kinds of things.
I think one of the things which I have noticed is that as a healthcare provider, you know, the field of medicine and healthcare is evolving, you know. More and more licensed nurses, you know, they are taking under the umbrella, you know, people just like physicians, you know, are taking physician assistance, you know. And with the changing healthcare need, I think, you know, with the limits of the budget, you know, and fiscal responsibilities comes with, you know, hiring extra personnel and that stuff, more and more, it's not only schools, even healthcare systems actually, you know, nationally, following up this kind of, you know, delegation where kind of under your umbrella, kind of you, you allow so and so, so and so. But it's a kind of, you know, understanding of, you know, a two-way communication that like, for example, when I'm in clinic and I'm doing scopes and all this stuff, I have two physician assistants, you know, who have my cell phone number, they call me here, Dr. Khan, I have so and so patients, or, you know, I was thinking of doing this. Same thing applies to our, our school nurses too. So I think it's a, just a creative way and also developing the comfort level from both the sides, you know, as such, so.
Barry, I know you have a question.
The reason why I brought this up is that you have very young employees now that we're hiring, college students. They're not going to say, I can't do this or I won't do this, or maybe they're not aware of a situation that they are assigned to where this method of applying, of giving this student this medication, she was totally caught. And she was very nervous about going on the field trip. Fortunately for her, nothing happened. But it was kind of an invasive way.
So it sounds like you're identifying some opportunities to just reiterate, re-educate, make sure, we're really making sure that's part of their onboarding process, that they know the, you know, the expectations, but also their, their rights and their, and their limits?
Well, and if you say, we worked this particular age, he's gone.
Wait, I think what, I mean, I don't think we need more conversation about it, but I think that, I think that, I, I think they're saying that it's covered if, I mean, if, should something happen and they have to make alternate plans, that's what they do, which is what I've seen in, is what I've seen in my, my experience.
I would ask if you'd follow up with Miss Karalovich to find out more about that particular situation so that we can make sure that that person is more comfortable. But other than that, we have many, many people who assume these roles very successfully, so. But we do need to follow up on that for sure.
And I think, you know, your concern is definitely, I don't want to kind of, concern is very, you know, genuine, as such, and as I said earlier, it's a two-way communication and two-way comfort level, you know? Because it's the nurses whose license is actually online at the same time, you know, is the responsibility, I think, responsibility of the individual. Like I will expect my physician assistant to ask me if he's not comfortable with doing something rather than just saying, so patient treated under the supervision, Dr. Khan, man, you know, my name is there. So I think it's a, I think a responsibility of both the person, so kind of, you know, definitely, I think the person who's being delegated has to be responsible. And we have to have the protocols, ways, and means, and we're sure, you know, our nurses do, you know, with that as such, so, yeah.
Does anybody have any, any questions, further comment about this policy?
Yeah, I do. Bottom of page one and the first line of page two, where we added this, "The health-related services does not include the procedure of administering prescribed or over-the-counter medication by ingestion." And so who are we saying we're, we're not willing to give any medications to or who can or cannot? I was confused as I was reading that.
That's fair. It's a little bit of a clunky statement. It's essentially saying that this process of nurse delegation of tasks does not apply to, to oral medications, so.
Oh, so it's only the delegation of tasks?
Correct. Correct. So anything aside from oral, then we're required to do that training and think through that, who is the most appropriate person to carry out this task?
do that training and think through that, who is the most appropriate person to carry out this task?
Okay, but as a nurse, you would have no
Correct.
reservations about.
Correct. If you think about school districts who have to administer medications, they don't need to employ a nurse to train somebody to administer those to students.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, I'm looking for a motion to approve revised policy 5319 as presented.
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And uh policy 5310, school, health and emergency nursing services, please.
So this policy was last revised in 2016. We again have this minor, you know, changes to the language. Again, this policy states about how we approach emergency services, you know, using evidence-based, using, you know, HIPAA, making sure our there is patient protection, you know, identity is protected as such and that's what we have done. Just a minor revision of the policy is the same. There is no kind of, you know, just changes in the of the language as such.
And, you know, the rules were taken out because it really, they really do not encompass everything that is associated with emergency school nursing, so. And to put everything in the rules related to that would be inappropriate. So it was better to redraft the actual policy language to make it encompass what the statutes say and not have specific rules as we had in the past. So I would just add that that is why those have been eliminated from the policy.
All right, any discussion?
Just one question. So it's really about nursing, emergency services? I mean, emergency services, EMTs, is nursing really appropriate there or? Because it's more just nurses, anybody can respond to emergency. I mean, these teams are, have a lot of different people.
Correct. Our internal teams, we run the training and whether or not there are items that we partner with different roles throughout the districts, if you think about AEDs. Lori and I assist in what sort of AEDs are we going to stock, how are those supplies being maintained? And yes, that spans broader than just the school district. But it is definitely part of nursing services delivery when you look at how we respond to internal emergencies in the district. So we, each building has the emergency response teams that we talk about in this policy. Lori and I do the ongoing training with those teams. I think that's where the the nursing component is really driving this policy.
Your responsibility.
Right. The way I read this was our sort of
organizational
You are our highest level of care that we provide within the district.
Correct.
We wouldn't say we provide trauma ser- emergency trauma services because we don't employ trauma surgeons.
The the language pairs the statute language too.
All right.
Same as statute language.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
It just seemed a little, I understand now, thank you.
Anything further? Sure, please.
Uh let's see, one, two, three. The fourth paragraph is crossed out and then the next one, the fifth one. In the middle there, it says each building within the district shall establish an emergency response team which may be activated as needed to provide supportive or life-saving care until emergency medical services arrive. I struggle with the supportive or life-saving care because if that that's the only thing we can do? Supportive or life-saving, aren't there some things in the middle there?
Absolutely.
So I would strike that and say maybe activated as needed until emergency medical services arrive because in fact, you're going to do whatever you need to do.
Right.
Not just supportive or life-saving.
Alan, that is supportive. Because in in the, you don't say if a person, for example, has a cardiac arrhythmia all of a sudden comes down, you say, I'm going to provide supportive care until unless the emergency person arrives. That supportive care can be CPR, can be kind of, you know, you know.
A Band-Aid.
Yeah, whatever kind of, so that is
So supportive is just
supportive is all inclusive. Basically, if you're not curing them, you're supporting them.
Yeah.
So
It's the right word rather than you cannot define, I'm going to place a Band-Aid if there is a laceration. I'm going to kind of press compressions on the chest, you know.
No, I'm I'm not suggesting we list everything that we could possibly do. I'm thinking that this is limiting in its scope of what it said.
Supportive is includes everything.
Then why would you add life-saving?
Because it is life-saving. You have to try. The goal is life to save the life. You cannot say supportive and
Yeah, I'm not doing that part of it.
So so supportive includes life-saving?
Supportive with the goal of life-saving.
And life, so and or or? I mean, I don't think it changes the message of the
I I struggled as I read that and said
It's either supportive or life-saving.
Yeah, it's supportive or life-saving. What's supportive? And I'm not in a medical field, so I
But I, you know, I'd also like to point out that this communicates to our employees and our community what we will do. And I think it's critical to say that we will do life-saving in our policy. And supportive is that encompassing piece that says we'll do everything else too. But we will do life-saving and we have, we saved a life.
Okay. I didn't understand that supportive meant everything other than life-saving.
Because we want to know what that team is capable of.
It's why we revised it. It previously had said first aid. And we were like, no, it's far more than, it's far broader to your point of we might get there and assess the individual and say, we're going to stay with you.
Nineteen hundred, so.
And I think truly like
I've seen first aid, you'd say it all the time.
Right. And I think supportive thinking for some students that might be a juice. Some students that might be, you know, holding a bucket so they can vomit. It might be putting them in a different kind of position to help stabilize their blood pressure or so when I think of supportive, I think of various things all the way to CPR and using a defibrillator, you know, more of a worst-case scenario, so.
And you're a medical person. When I read supportive, I thought, it's going to be okay.
I was just going to say, I hate to bore eagles, but sometimes we do that too.
Sometimes that's what really is needed, but
All right, I'm looking.
I move that we accept the revised policy as presented, 5310.
Second.
All right, motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Item D, board liaison reports.
I had my final visit with Mrs. Shannon at Ben Franklin. And I'm just so excited about how much that school has continues to grow. And I actually attended their final PTO meeting and just how much family and parent involvement has continued to grow. Great things are happening at Ben Franklin. And I believe they're presenting at our next meeting, so I can't wait for you to all hear from them. I had my final meeting with Leanne as interim director of curriculum and teaching and learning. And that was a great conversation, just sort of looking back at where we've been. And I let her know the, to pass on to our future director, the things I'm going to continue to hound him about. So, there you go.
Okay.
Anyone else? Board liaison reports.
Did attend the SWSA meeting. There is a new director coming on board from Illinois.
Correct. Well, she lives in Wisconsin now.
Okay, she's in Wisconsin now.
But she was superintendent.
Superintendent. We did also, we received a template report, a budget report that tries to communicate, you know, the situation to so people understand the Form RI and the cliff and all those things as a as a baseline for communicating. As Jim said, we need to be communicating the situation to and do a better job of advocating our financial need to increase the the spending limit. And we'll be talking more about that, I suppose, next meeting too.
Yeah, next board meeting.
Thank you. I met with Ms. Cody in preparation for the mental health report and the HOC, and we talked about that a bit. Also, I had an opportunity to attend Pleasant View and talk with Ms. O'Kay. And unfortunately, we only had about 10 minutes because she had a student thing come up, so. I'm going to have to go go and visit her again, which will be, which will be lovely because she is incredible. Anybody else? While we're on liaison reports, there will be we'll be talking about new liaison assignments and I'll I I don't know if that got sent out or I'm supposed to send it out. Okay. I haven't, I will send it out, so, okay. And those, the new the new assignments start after the school year, so.
I was going to be asking if I could shake things up and possibly stay on another year at Ben Franklin simply because there's going to be a new principal there and I would, so consider that and see if any of you shake it up, stay an extra year at Ben Franklin. If any of you were really wanting Ben Franklin, I would maybe stand down.
Maybe stand down.
Maybe you could arm wrestle for it. I could stay at the high school.
Anyway.
All right, school and community engagement reports. Anyone? Band concert was yesterday.
So two band-related, music-related things, actually. Our students, we had, I want to, I'm going to forget the exact numbers, it was over 50, 54, I think. Student, either individuals or ensembles who qualified to go to the state, WSMA state performance on Saturday. And of those, this is where I'm getting my numbers confused, but I it was 54 total and 38 of those that got the highest rating possible in that performance. So that was very much a point of Franklin pride. It was really fun to be at Parkside. The last time we were there, the current seniors were freshmen because then they lost, you know, state is always in May, so COVID had happened. They had district solo ensemble three years ago, but they never got to go to state. And then everything was virtual last year. So to be back on the, you know, college campus and kids performing and just that excitement, that was just, you know, a fun thing to be a part of. And then, yes, culminating last night in the band concert, the final high school band concert, which was just phenomenal. I mean, like, I mean, I wish you all had been there. I have videos if you want some. It was just, it was really to see the kids, you know, we started with Festival of the Bands in January with like the sixth graders. And then to see them, you know, to see, you know, if you keep with it, where you can end up in in high school, it's just really, it's very fun. Good night, lots of excitement.
It's nice the rain held off last night.
It was nice that the rain held off because of course, the real excitement last night, which I was just going to say, was that the marching band trailer was delivered yesterday. And so that was on display for families to be able to visit as they came in. And that was really especially fun for the pit crew parents who have been loading U-Hauls for years in their own cars and whatever else. And the new trailer, if I can just indulge you for a minute, has all these really cool features such as instead of going up a little narrow U-Haul ramp to like load things on, it's a full, like the whole back of it comes down, so it's like the safety, you're not going to fall off of it. And it has lights, it's solar-powered, so the lights are solar-powered. And it's just, it's it's really, I mean, Chad, Mr. Kafka, did an amazing job with the out, the design of the vinyl wrap. It just, it looks, it looks really sharp. And it's just like, the kids seeing it, they're like, wow. When we pull up to a competition and even they're talking about, you know, they're going to the milk game, milkman game next week, like if they can bring their instruments in the trailer to the milkman game, like it's just like even just driving around Franklin, they're just like, wow, everybody's going to know. Like it just was such a a moment of of pride. It was really exciting and, you know, the for the families who donated and everything else to come and see what it actually looks like. It's really big.
It's a lot if you drive by the school.
Where they're going to keep it.
It's behind the auditorium, behind the saver center.
If you go to like drop off a kid in the morning, you can see it, but it is, it's in the parking lot.
Corner of the behind, behind.
Okay. So if you like, even if you're, as you're driving down 51st, if you look, I mean, keep your eyes on the road, but if you look right before you go to the saver center, you can see it from the road.
That's where it's parked all the time.
That's where it's parked.
Oh, you can see it from the street when your husband's driving.
Anyway, so there is a lot of, a lot to celebrate with that, so thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. School board member comments.
I was hoping that maybe we could have some consensus around after hearing from all the students. I know there's been a lot of work in the curricular area, sort of looking at looking back, why has enrollment decreased in some of our music offerings and sort of what is the vision for the future? I know that that is theoretically on the agenda for the fall. But I just think, given the degree of interest and I I have interest and I'm wondering if we could possibly hear hear a, hear some of that information maybe over the summer sooner rather than later? Maybe as a standalone item as opposed to fold it into the larger report that we were maybe going to get? Thoughts? Anyone?
I would, I would fully support that. I think we need to be talking about it sooner rather than later.
And the staff has been working throughout the entire year on things. And I I understand, you know, how you'd want to know that. We could certainly try that. It would be probably best to have them here to help kind of explain some of that work too.
That would be ideal, yeah.
So if we could arrange this summer to get them here and do that earlier than later, I think Dr. Mo would be willing to do that.
Would that wouldn't put too much pressure on you?
The only my staff, not that they're not willing, but the availability of staff to when the board meetings are scheduled would be the only thing we have to finagle.
And I would have a special interest in, you know, assuming that staffing is going to go forward as you've proposed, sort of how are we going to support the teachers?
Would it be easier for staff if, I mean, to try to do it in two weeks? Are you saying like during the summer, they might not be as available? Would it be better to try to squeeze it in all of a sudden in May or we should just wait and?
I think we should.
I don't think the work's done.
Yeah.
We have a draft of action steps. The staff have 16 hours that we redelegated to them to finish, right? We have our list of things that, based on the data review, based on the root cause, here's the three things that were common across K-12 that they want to focus on. So we're as far as, here's what we want to do, that exactly what each thing looks like, they have not had a chance to do yet. So I would just want to, like, there's not a, that comes next year, right? We just have our areas that we want to focus on. So if you're looking for a full-fledged plan, I would not say they would be ready for that until fall, which is why we kind of put it there because they have this work in the summer that they're doing. So we can give you how far we are. We know what we're going to put together a plan for, but that plan won't be worked out. If that's what you're looking for, details until fall, so that's just something to consider.
I think anything just to sort of show that it is being looked at, both both for our benefit, but then also just to sort of publicly show the community that
Would it be fair if I just included a a debrief of the work as part of the coherence plan report and then added the details of it in the fall? Or is that not going to be the level that you want?
I think I'd want a little, I I'd want it to
I think though, putting in context, because even though we, you know, it's focused on music, it has to function within our overall curriculum.
That's what we were going to add in the fall, kind of a touch point on where all these teams are that we've been doing work with. So that was the context, music being one of the teams that we worked on specifically as a part of curriculum review. So that was the original context as we would go into it, like we are going to go into the other. Some areas have had more work than others, depending where they are in that cycle, right? And music's one of them that's had a lot of work this past year.
I think given that fact and just the degree of interest, I would like to see it as a standalone item.
Well, especially if there are, if there are staffing decisions being made around that and how we're going to be supporting that, I think it's important. I don't know other areas, if there are also staffing changes that are happening with those other root cause analysis.
I'm just telling you, if you want that in two weeks, we'll get as far as the topic areas. I was asking about your staffing.
Summer, whatever you think is reasonable.
That gives you more time.
I was not suggesting it needed to be in two weeks. I was just wondering if you thought it would be easier staffing-wise because they're still, you know, they're not like taking off for a three-month vacation or something. But we don't have to have every staff member here either.
We can do that.
Most likely, there'll be some sort of update by Dr. Mo this summer and then with the staff in fall. To be realistic, that's probably what it would look like. When I say update, you know, that what, as far as we are peace, but bringing the staff in would be more appropriate once that plan's actually developed.
I feel like staff could be invited to come if they
Anybody can come to any meeting if they want to.
That's true. So more information this summer.
Okay.
So I happened to attend the CSAR one governance workshop yesterday. And one of the things which of course kind of, you know, we tried to adhere to here is that they were quoting the studies where they were quoting the studies where a cohesive working board with a high level of trust has an impact on the student's outcomes. A high-trust school has eight percent improvement in reading and twenty percent improvement in math. The reason I was talking about, and we, because we all the time talk about equity and closing the gap and all that stuff, is working as a cohesive board with the mindset of governance is very, very important. And also, one of the takeaway points, which kind of they were trying to emphasize is that when, as a board, we come all at first with our own mindset, which us, which us supposed to, because we are elected officials. But once a decision is made, the word cohesive has to be there. It has to be a unified board with a mindset of governance and making sure that we don't hold people's opinions or authority. I'm thinking that they voted for that reason, for example, you know? We must not indulge in that. Must have understanding that everybody in the board is working for the best of the students and have the level of trust. And in reality, in life, developing trust is not easy. But when you come to the board, especially at board, board members, once a decision is made, you must trust each other and only then it will be a high-level trust, which will result in good student outcomes. So just wanted to convey that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for turning that.
All right, uh, future agenda items. Ben Franklin Elementary School presentation is next meeting. Uh, tobacco poster winner presentation, I know that's next meeting as well. We talked about that. Dr. Miller, I don't know what the outcome was.
I think it's still on for the twenty-fifth.
Uh, technology update, communications plan update, Friends of Franklin recognition, twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three CISA contract and SWA, SWSA contract for the same and budget and staffing presentation for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three. Graduation update, coherence plan end-of-year report and Border Creek discussion.
Question on graduation update? What is, what is that?
It's, um, just to talk about how it went.
That's the look, that's the after graduation.
Yeah, that happens after graduation.
That will not be a large agenda item.
This is our second year, so, you know, just.
I had one more, I had one more suggestion, uh, uh, for the board members is that, because we do receive a lot of emails from the community members, you know? And one of the things which they were talking about at CISA is that how to reply to the emails in a unified manner. Again, you know, just have some kind of a, you know, so I was thinking if we can maybe create some kind of a one-dot phrase as per the, you know, because the question is that, for example, I receive an email, all of us receive the email, am I right? And I reply that, thank you so much, so-and-so, we appreciate your email, you know, you know? Sometimes, uh, of course, you know, we write, you know, uh, both, both president will get back to you or something. So I think, you know, if you have a unified, you know, just so that, you know, the people, the constituents acknowledge that we have read the email and we're replying, but we also, when you're replying, if you have some kind of a, you know, like in medicine, you know, and you understand that we have a dot phrase, am I right? Kind of, you know, that, it's, so it's unified language that, you know, all of us are saying the same thing that, you know, I'm not going to be responding to email your consent separately because I'm just a board member, but we as a board discuss everything together with the administrator and then the president is going to email you back, you know? So what do you guys think about that?
Do you wanna work on some draft language?
I think you will be better at that.
Oh.
I'll have a lot of ball prep in that, you know, so I don't want that.
Flattery will get you everywhere.
I think it's certainly something to talk about when we.
So you're saying that we would all individually respond to the email?
I think he's saying if you want to individually respond, saying I received your email, you can await a, a formal response from Mr. Sprague, just some suggested language to use if in fact you want to, but that you don't need to.
I could see one, if there was, uh, 'cause I do read them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it also increases our engagement because when we respond, I think, it's my understanding is that when you respond as a separate board member, then still saying that you receive official, you know, response from the president and that's for the board policy and all that stuff. So at least they see that you're reading the emails and not, if you, once you respond, they acknowledge that we have read it.
Yeah.
Good idea.
All right, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at eight-thirty.